Can I have your attention, please? I want to thank you all for coming tonight for the St. Joseph School District Board of Education meeting on April 25th, 2016. This is a call to order, Ms. Consolvo, please call the row.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Crissman?
Here.
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 Here. Next will be pledge allegiance, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be school recognitions. We're going to do Benton girls first, ladies and gentlemen, just a little bit out of order because they have another engagement that comes up pretty quick after we finish here, so please bear with us. Mr. Barry Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker, and the board, and superintendent. I'd first like to introduce Coach...we're going to do basketball first, do you care which order we do it in?
Basketball.
Okay, so we're going to introduce first Mr. Brett Goodwin, and he's going to talk just a little bit about very successful season.
First off, I'd just like to thank the board for allowing us to come here tonight and enjoying our great season. I'm going to just read off a couple stats real quick before I introduce the girls and my coaching staff. From district play on, I think this exemplifies how mentally tough we were throughout the season, especially, you know, our state tournament run. In the semifinals of district, we beat Lafayette, and Lafayette was averaging 48 points a game, we held them to 21. Championship game, Smithville was averaging 55, and we held them to 34. Sectional game, KC Center was averaging 57, we held them to 45. Quarterfinal game, Grain Valley was averaging 61, we held them to 22. Semifinal game, Owensville was averaging 57 points a game, we held them to 25. And then in the championship game, MICDS was averaging 62 points a game, we held them to 32 in a double overtime performance. And, you know, I think that's just a quick glimpse of just what this group was able to accomplish throughout an entire season. And, you know, on most nights, I don't think we were overly more talented than everybody else, but we were definitely physically and mentally tougher than everybody else. And I'm going to just quickly, you want me to bring them all up here? Okay, I'm going to start with my freshmen, Melanie Murphy. Mia Henderson.
Stand here, and then look at that one.
Jade Williams. Sidney Johnson. And Bailey Russell. Jada Bates was not able to be here tonight. My sophomores, Kennedy Roughcorn. And Izzy Reynolds was not able to be here tonight. They were soph- freshman or sophomore tracked me someplace tonight. Juniors, Ashley Mott. And Tamea Stillman. And my two lone seniors, we've got Deja Bernard and Kylie Williams, who in that championship game scored 34 of our 42 points. And before I introduce my coaching staff, I just, these last three girls that I introduced, if some of you didn't, I probably know they don't follow them on different posts, but they made a pact to not shave their legs. For the entire season until we lost. So you guys can only imagine the before and after pictures that we got to see. It was, especially Mia, I mean, she had more hair on her legs than most men.
Aww.
And I know, sitting there on the bench, watching other people as we played against them, it was definitely a treat. But, I'm going to introduce my coaching staff real quick. Kirsten Bolton, you want our coaches, come on, Kirsten, come on up. Blaine Clarity. Barb Bell. And Mitch Gears. You know, and I'll finish with this, you know, as a head coach, you're only as good as your players and your assistant coaches, and this is, this is what we are. We've got a group of kids that show up and work extremely hard every day, and, you know, I don't ever have to beg my coaches to do anything. They're right there beside me, and they do everything we need to do to be successful. So there's your, there's your state champions. We appreciate it.
To have the Board of Education, we'd like to say thank you for all your hard work.
Okay.
Say thank you to all your hard work, because I know for this guy, you worked hard. I've seen some practices, I've seen some games, and I was happy to be there when it went 30 and 0. I appreciate the championship, studying better than that, 31 and 0. So you can't, you can't argue with success. You represent the St. Joseph School District in high fashion. Very ladies. Congratulations.
You guys, you've got to go to the next place, so grab on your stuff and...
Good job, guys. A lot of our athletes are getting honored at the city council tonight, too, and that's at 7:00, so they're making a quick run over there. So which group do you want next, Mr. Rucker?
Let's go with the wrestlers, sir.
Okay, so Coach Brad Hubbard could come up, we had a very successful wrestling season as well, and he's going to tell you a little bit about that. Coach Hubbard.
All right, thanks, Mr. Johnson. I want to thank the school board for allowing us to come up here and speak about our season. We had five state qualifiers this year. I want to recognize the ones who are here, I know we had some, one young man had to work this evening, and the other young man apparently stuck in traffic or another engagement somewhere. Isaiah Johnson, come on up. Isaiah's junior for us, state qualifier this year, this is only his third year in the sport. He had over 40 wins this year, which is pretty phenomenal for a kid who, who does not have a tremendous amount of experience in the sport. Very fun to watch, was one match away from bringing home a state medal, was actually winning the match, and made a mistake, cost him the match, but he'll be back next year and hopefully earn us some team points, and we can put a medal around his neck. What else we have here? Jordan Shoemaker. Jordan Shoemaker's junior as well, he was fourth place in the state this year, moved up a couple weight classes from last year. Great, great kid to have in the room, very intense. He won his second state medal this year. Built, I believe, fifth last year as sophomore, and fourth this year as junior, and we just hope keep, we keep climbing the ranks there with him. He's back again next year as well. Tage McNutt. Tage was a state finalist this year, he's also a junior. He had an outstanding year, got beaten in state finals by a kid that won his third state championship. Had a, had a tremendous season as well, won his second state medal this year, was fifth place as sophomore last year, fourth place, or, excuse me, second place again this year. So we're, we're hoping to go one better next year as a senior. And then the two young men that are not here, one was a junior, Curtis, or, excuse me, sophomore, Curtis Weston, he was a fourth place medal winner this year, and only his second season of wrestling. Very tremendously talented athletically and physically, and he's a kid that picked up the sport very quickly, and is, is young and can add to the success of our team as well. And then the other young man that's not here is Zach Fredrickson, he was our heavyweight. He was a state qualifier this year, and scored us a lot of team points. We had five, five qualifiers, three medalists this year, and we have four of the guys coming back to help us score points next year, and we, we hope to improve on a top 10 team performance, and hopefully get ourselves in position maybe to do what Coach Goodman did. They had a tremendous girls' basketball season, and we would like to be part of that as well. So we're going to continue to work hard, want to recognize the coaches who are here tonight. The ones who are not here, Coach Callaway is now at the city council meeting, so we could have a representative there in case they got started early. See, Coach Stackhouse is here, come on up, Coach Stackhouse. He is our, actually our middle school coach, but he does some stuff behind the scenes for us at the high school level, and is a very, very tremendous leader for our program, and helps us when we need some, some things done. Eric Nash. Eric Nash is one of my longtime assistants. He works really hard, works from outside the district, comes in every day, works with the kids individually, and is my, probably my left-hand man, man, he's, he's the guy that, that bounced a lot of ideas off of. And then Coach Toll and Coach Williams were unable to be here, those are two of our volunteer assistants that, that worked extremely hard behind the scenes as well, actually wrestled in our program, so they're coming back to, to give back to what we do. And then Coach Barry was unable to make it tonight, he's getting ready to graduate from Missouri Western, but he was also very instrumental in these, in these guys' success up here. So again, thank you for your recognition for these guys, and we appreciate it.
Just, just like I said when Central's wrestling team came up here, if you only knew how hard these guys work out, it is incredible, they, they train all the time, they, they have to watch their body weights, they're not guaranteed a spot, they have wrestle-offs, they're, they're work, they're like the blue collar workers of all the sports. I was a basketball player, so I had no idea, I tried to do this once, I lasted about 30 seconds, and I could run 10 miles, I couldn't wrestle more than about 30 seconds. You guys are, are inspiration for all the other athletes in school, and I'd like to thank this coach, because this is becoming an annual event with you going to state, bringing home all those state medals every year.
Appreciate that.
And I know, we had another McNutt that was state champion, and Williams, Williams won the state, too.
Williams and Toll were both state champions.
You know, you have done a tremendous job. Having been a Benton graduate myself, I remember Bob Clemmons and Ron Starks, and we had some great coaches, but man, you guys are just, you're just setting the precedent, that's just like Coach Goodman, that winning all those medals and championships, it makes us so proud to represent St. Joe, and the Board of Education is extremely pleased, and we want to just say thank you, and keep up the good work, and good luck in the future.
Thanks, Thomas. Thank you, thanks. Thanks. Thank you.
Great job. Every year.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next we'll bring up Coach Roseberry, she's, we haven't been doing dance competitively for a while, I don't think, but she, ever maybe. So we jumped off the cliff this year with some competitive dance, and she's done a great job, so Coach Roseberry.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, board, for recognizing us tonight, as well as supporting us. I'll tell you a little bit about the squad, they worked really hard this year, this is the first time that we've ever taken a squad and competed at the state level, and they did a phenomenal job, they ended up placing second in our hip-hop division. Our dance mix didn't do as well, but it's something that we're going to work on next year. We did have four girls that got academic all-state, that was Tagan Rich, Maddie Myers, I'm drawing a blank here, Izzy Reynolds, and Maddie Dixon. And no, none of those girls are here tonight, they had other commitments, but I do have two girls that are here, two of my captains. Taylee Shoemaker, can you come on up? She placed third at state for her solo, which was awesome. She lives and breathes dance, and her brother was on, one of the state qualifiers on the wrestling squad. And then my other captain is Bella Higgins, can you come on up, Bella? Bella's a leader on our squad, and I'll have both of these girls back next year to help us out, because we have higher expectations for next year now that we got a taste at the state level. The rest of the girls that are not here tonight, like I said, had other commitments, Tagan Rich, Izzy Reynolds, Bakari Cook, Darian Duncan, Kirsten Woodruff, and Maddie Myers, and Maddie Dixon. Thank you, everybody.
All right, I get to talk again, I know you love that. First of all, I want you to know that Annie here was a first-team all-state basketball player herself, first team.
I, I did dance up until middle school, so I know a little bit about dance.
She can do the halftime show. And also, I wanted to tell you that her sister, and her two brothers, and her father, were all first-team all-state basketball players from Benton High School. That's never, I don't think that's happened anywhere in the state of Missouri. So she's, she's one of the famous people in, in the south end, and we are so proud of you at the school district, the whole town. Congratulations, ladies, and good luck.
Thank you.
We have two other students to recognize tonight that made it to the state in DECA, Mrs. Emily Zawadny-Walkup, and Judy, or not Judy, Trudy Hauser would please come up. They were both state qualifiers in the DECA contest, and Coach Mustard and Coach Hendricks couldn't be here, they're sponsors tonight, because they are coaching baseball as we speak, so want to recognize them for making state in DECA this year, so great job.
This town loves a winner. These, these girls and myself have a lot in common, they had a 4.0 grade point average, I had an 0.4 grade point average.
Thank you for allowing us to honor our folks, thank you.
Next we'll have Mr. Verbit. Superintendent's artwork.
Good evening, Dr. Newhart, President Rucker, and board. Each year, we are able to showcase some of the finest artists we have in the school district, and this last year was no different. Children who won, their artwork was framed and hanging outside the boardroom this last year, and so some of those individuals are here this evening, I believe, to receive their artwork, so if you are here, come forward, and I'll hand you back your artwork, and then we'll just stay up here, and we'll, we'll take care of that. So one of them was Brooke Gerling from Scaith. Brooke, are you here this evening?
Oh, it's very nice.
This was Brooks.
Beautiful.
What grade are you in now? Fourth, so she did this in 3rd grade.
Wow.
Next, we have Tivian Shump. Is Tivian here? Okay. Michaela Miller, is Michaela here this evening? Jerika, I'm sorry.
Jerika, show it to us.
Is there anyone that I missed? Okay, nice job, ladies, thank you so much. Whoop, okay.
Certificates.
Well, I'm honored, on behalf of the Board of Education, to present these certificates for you all. You know, it's, the irony, the irony here is I have absolutely no talent in art, like I do, I might have had an old point for GPA in art classes, but I have a great appreciation for what it adds to our life. Your artwork, and it's stunningly beautiful, adds beauty to our world, and so thank you, continue to develop your talents, we appreciate it.
Next we'll have Ms. Owens for Eugene Field. Good evening, Dr. Newhart, Board of Education, and everyone supporting SJSD. Every year, our PTA council affords our students the opportunity to submit reflections either in written format or visual art, and these three lovely ladies submitted something this year in the visual arts department. I'm Mrs. Owens at Eugene Field, and we were honored to have these three ladies represent our school, and we wanted to share what they have done outside our school walls. And they all received awards at the state level in the category of visual arts. Teresa Mori, which is a second grader, step forward, Teresa, please, she received second, can you step forward just a little bit so they can see it? There you go. Received second place at state. And then we had Emily Pinlin, you want to step forward, sweetie? She's a first grade student, and she received honorable mention, and along with her, a kindergarten student, Avery Tool, received honorable mention also. Thank you. And I also want to give a huge shout-out to our art teacher, Mrs. Ruth Rathbun, she has done an excellent job with these students. Again, I probably had a .04 in art, I'm not an art teacher, and so she has just done a remarkable job, and our fine arts department does a remarkable job, so again, thank you very much. And thank you, girl.
And their artwork is still at the state level, because they're not able to show it off tonight.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I certainly want to congratulate these young ladies, and to think that they're just beginning in our school district, and how they've flourished over the years, how proud we are. Congratulations.
Next we'll have Deb Balling and Jay Myers, who are science fair winners.
First, thank you very much for taking the time to recognize our students and to view all of their work out in the hallway. I hope you find it as awesome as I have. I've been privileged to work with 16 GATE students that competed at Marstef and Academy, and of those 16, five were invited to go to state. Alex Stewart was not able to be here today, but would the other four please come forward and stand in the front? Carson Gaddy is an eighth grade student from Bodie, and step forward, please, so they can all recognize you. And he did his project on stress and temperature, and got a red ribbon down at state. Lily Kelly from Spring Garden is also an eighth grader, and she worked with Hard and Soft Water to see about the cleanliness of clothing in St. Joseph, Missouri, and she did an awesome job, and also received a red. Cole Anderson did his project on the golden ratio, and trying to see if there was a preference based on what the design was, what the shape was, and how close it was to the golden ratio as to whether you would prefer it or not. And Cole's earned a purple ribbon, which is the highest ribbon that you can get down there, and did an extremely fine job. He was not invited to be part of the finals round, however, but next year, we'll see, since he's a seventh grader, we'll hope he goes back. Isabella Wibbelt-Smith, and Isabella also received a purple for her project, which had to do with coliforms, she worked with a lady from out at Kit Bond Incubator, and did an extremely fine job in microbiology. Isabella won first place in the middle-level division, and received the Kirkpatrick Eagle down at the State Junior Academy of Science. In addition, her recognition didn't just stop there, she also received an award for the best microbiology paper for a middle-level student. She will be also competing for the award this summer for the Broadcom Masters, and that's the top 10% of students in the entire country that are given this opportunity to participate, so we'll hope we hear more from her. Thank you.
So I'll give the certificates to the teacher to hand out, send out to everybody here tonight. Really well done, you guys are some of the brightest kids in the district, and we're so proud of you. Thank you so much.
To follow up with that, thank you, board. My name is Jay Myers, I'm the secondary science coordinator, and I get the opportunity to teach these two gentlemen, the guys right up front. This is Harrison Mears, who's a senior at Central High School, and Anthony Actall, a junior at Central High School. Both of these students recently participated in the same event at the high school division of the Missouri Junior Academy of Science. It's a statewide event, and both of these students received the highly superior purple ribbon in their, in their respective categories. In addition, Anthony received at the senior level the Golden Eagle Kirkpatrick Award, which Ms. Bowden failed to mention, there's only two that are awarded in the entire state at both the middle school level and at the high school level, and we have two students who got two of them.
That's awesome.
In addition, Anthony also has the opportunity, because he won our regional science fair, he will be attending the International Science and Engineering Fair in Phoenix, Arizona, the entire last week of school, and where he will be presenting his research with about 1,500 students from over 50 different countries, hoping to get a share of about $5 million in scholarships and awards. So good luck to Anthony. Thank you, gentlemen.
So, on behalf of the Board of Education, want to thank these high school students for their awesome scientific studies, and we're expecting great things from you in the future. Well done. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have our math Olympia, Ms. Callaway.
Hi, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come. We had several groups of students who went up to Maryville for a math contest, but our sophomore group, if you guys want to come on forward, please sit over here, they placed first, and the Math Olympiad is a contest between schools from all over Nebraska, Iowa, Missouri, and Kansas that come up there to Maryville to compete, and this team placed first in their sophomore division, which is a very big deal. This is William Gentry, Cade Musser, and Boston Small. They compete as a, on a paper test, as a written, and then also individually. Individually, Boston also got fifth, is that right? And then William got first in his place, so this is a great achievement for St. Joe, so thank you, gentlemen.
On behalf of the Board of Education, this is awesome, you're working, you're working and, and that's great. Thank you, Mrs. Callaway.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have a school profile from Coleman Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Heather Gladheart, principal at Coleman Elementary School. I want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Newhart, and guests for allowing me the opportunity to share about the great things taking place at Coleman Elementary School. As you may remember, Coleman Elementary has seen many changes over the past couple of years with the closing of Noys and opening of Oak Grove School. Nearly 100% of the students and staff members are new to Coleman since the fall of 2014, coming together from Noys Elementary and other SJSD schools. We put together a video to highlight what is happening at Coleman. Hello. Welcome to Coleman Elementary School. My name is Heather Gladheart, and I am the principal at Coleman Elementary. Coleman Elementary School opened its doors in September 1966 as Hawthorne Elementary School. The school was named after Nathaniel Hawthorne, American novelist and writer of short stories. In 1996, the school was renamed Coleman Elementary School after longtime Assistant Superintendent, Mr. G. Max Coleman. Coleman Elementary School currently serves 420 preschool through sixth grade students. Let's go inside and see what we can learn from our Coleman Cougars.
Hi, I'm Teresa Jewell, a teacher of English as a Second Language, also known as ESOL. Our school community is blessed with a diverse population of nearly 100 English as a Second Language students who speak more than 15 different languages. This creates a unique learning experience for all of our students as we learn about each other's culture, history, and traditions. However, this proves to be very challenging for our ESOL students as they are not only being taught and learning the same curriculum, but are working to learn and understand the English language. Let's check out what's happening in preschool.
Hi, I'm Chris Lake, the preschool teacher at Coleman Elementary. It's never too soon to start the path of success, and that's why the early childhood education is critical for our youngest learners and the world of learning in our school environment. We begin by setting the foundation for learning. We teach them social and academic skills, and we teach them how to be really nice friends to each other, and teach them how to learn about learning.
Coleman Elementary School recently have a new playground installed. Let's check out what a few of the students think about the new equipment. I asked him in Hakka, our language, what his favorite thing on the new playground is. And he said, "The circle that you crawl through." What is your favorite thing about the new playground?
Climb the ladders.
What is your favorite thing about the new playground?
I'm listening to the speaker, yelling in the speaker.
What is your favorite thing about the new playground?
To go down the slide.
We all know an ideal learning environment includes high expectations and clear criteria for behavior, allowing students to grow and explore in classrooms where the only challenges involve the rigor of the coursework. That's why Coleman is working to implement PBS. So let's ask Brooklyn to tell us more.
What is PBS? Positive Behavior Support. As a school writer, it plays the discipline that creates a safe and effective school. It is built on the foundation that basic conduct expectations should be taught and reinforced, resulting in improved behavior.
How do we teach PBS? By focusing on behaviors targeted on the behavior matrix. Coleman staff teach lessons and use immediate reinforcement to recognize positive behaviors. The PBS team needs often to review data, plan celebrations, and reflect on our progress. Our ultimate goal is to create a school climate that is calm and promotes effective instruction.
What is the reward? Yes, it creates a calm environment conducive to good education, but the students visit the Cougar Store every month to buy items with their Cougar cash. Less time spent focused on student behavior means more time on task and learning.
Great reporting, Cougars. Now let's turn to Tori to hear what the Coleman Student Council is up to.
Hi, my name's Tori. My favorite part about being in Student Council is cutting out Yoda and making posters to pep students up for math testing. Let's hear about, let's hear from some other students about what their favorite part about being Coleman Cougar is.
My favorite part about Student Council is the Kissafed Contest to help raise money for second harvest.
My favorite part about Student Council is, really the Limstec Battle to help out, to help them prep and get pumped up for the math testing week.
My favorite part of the Coleman Student Council is selling pencils to raise money.
My favorite part about being in Student Council is building a float to celebrate Central's homecoming.
Now let's hear from some Coleman students about what they love best about being Coleman Cougar. So, Ms. Schwartz, what do you like about being a Coleman Cougar?
I think my favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar is probably the students. We have a very diverse student body who really celebrates being individuals, and they're also very respectful, and their behavior is just tremendous and makes our work a lot easier. So definitely the students.
I like the teachers. They're very proud of us, and they try very hard to make us feel confident and good about ourselves. And they're always there for us, and they just, they make sure that we have the least amount of stress when we're taking the test, or just anything when we're at school. And they just, they try really hard to make us feel confident in ourselves and our work and everything.
Abell, what do you like best about being a Coleman Cougar?
It's about the teachers because they keep on helping us over and over until we know what to do. And if we keep, if we don't know what we're supposed to do, they keep on helping us.
So Dane, what do you like best about being a Coleman Cougar?
I like being a Coleman Cougar because the teacher helps us, and they never give up. And our teammates help us all the time.
So, Ms. Kelly, what is your favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar?
My favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar are the people. I love the people that I work with, I love the students that I get to work with, and I love the fact I get to work with students from all around the world.
Chen, what do you like most about being a Coleman Cougar?
Um, it feels like family.
So Matthew, what do you like best about being a Coleman Cougar?
My favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar has to be the staff. They are so supportive, and they are always there to help us.
Mrs. Winfrey, what do you love most about being a Coleman Cougar?
I love how diverse we are and how we accept each other, just like we are.
So Ryan, what do you like about being a Coleman Cougar?
Um, my classmates, they're always willing to help without me even having to ask, they just know.
Mr. C, what is your favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar?
Um, it would definitely have to be the staff. They're so, they're so welcoming and friendly. From the first day, I felt like I was part of the team, and they've really made my student teaching experience one to remember.
So Isaac, what do you like most about being a Coleman Cougar?
Everybody's a friend and nobody's a bully.
Dot, what's your favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar?
That I can learn new things.
So Adriana, what do you like most about being a Coleman Cougar?
Um, I like most of being a Coleman Cougar because I can meet new friends at school.
Nada, what's your favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar?
I like being a Coleman Cougar because I get to learn new things that I never knew before.
Ed, what's your favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar?
Meeting new friends.
So Samantha, what do you like best about being a Coleman Cougar?
I love being a Coleman Cougar because I get to learn a lot in class, and the teachers are super nice.
Hunter, what's your favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar?
I like math at Coleman.
So Kobe, what do you like best about being a Coleman Cougar?
The thing that I like best of being a Coleman Cougar is the friends I have in the staff here.
Ayanna, what is your favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar?
Um, my favorite thing about being a Coleman Cougar is that there is a lot of kids from different countries that go to our school here, and that they make very great friends, and that they're nice and kind to us.
There you have it. Let's see, let's take it back to Ms. Gladheart to see what she loves best about being a Coleman Cougar.
What do I love most about being a Coleman Cougar? I love that our school has the opportunity to educate this diverse group of students every day. Our students have a variety of talents and personalities that make Coleman a great place to learn and work. We accept each other's differences and celebrate our classmates' achievements. The Coleman staff is top-notch and dedicated to working with each student to help them reach their fullest potential. We want to thank you for joining us for a quick tour of Coleman Elementary School. We will proudly be celebrating Coleman's 50th anniversary next September. We hope you will join us.
I want to thank you again for the opportunity to present tonight. And before we wrap up, I would like for the members of our Student Council, as well as Ms. Schwartz, our Student Council sponsor, to please stand and be recognized as well. You guys did a great job, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Weller.
Thank you, Ms. Gladheart. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we ought to give one more round of applause for all of our students and our staff that presented today. This is the St. Joseph Cougars. Ladies and gentlemen, that truly is why we do what we do.
Amen.
Okay, our next order of business will be audience participation. First up will be Ms. Tara Stoll. Ms. Stoll, you know you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I want to thank the Board, and Superintendent, and everybody for allowing me to speak. Can you hear me? Sorry. I get to start the fun part, right? Okay. So I'm speaking tonight regarding Agenda Item 10.1, which is the sped classes relocation. Bear with me, I'm going to read this that I prepared with lack of sleep, so I apologize if it doesn't make sense, but I'll clarify if I need to. "It must be so hard." I hear this phrase quite often when someone learns I have a child with special needs. "It must be so hard." But it's not. Nothing about Olivia, our daughter who has Down syndrome, makes our lives difficult. The one thing that keeps me awake at night is her education. Her future. And the school district seeming disconcerned for the special education community overall. The children who arguably need the most compassion and consideration are put last, and I don't know why. When I heard about the possibility of Oak Grove Special Education Classroom being picked up and moved to another school, I was so sad, and then I quickly became frustrated and angry. You see, we've only just transferred to Oak Grove this year at the persuasion of the district in order for Olivia to receive the best education, that's what we were told. So we transferred both of our kids, Olivia, who has Down syndrome, and our typically developing child as well. It was the right decision. We love Oak Grove. I can't say enough about Mr. Otto and the environment that he's created for our kids. Olivia's thriving, she's learning, she's meeting her goals, you can see that on paper. And she's making so many friends and has wonderful peers in the building. The principal and staff are amazing, and have created a family atmosphere that is both stable and inclusive, which is exactly what we need for her future. Exactly what kids with special needs require, what all kids require, stability. Before you consider moving this classroom and programming from Oak Grove, I would ask you to consider these points, please. And I've also emailed each of you some of these and some additional ones, if you wouldn't mind checking your email, I would really appreciate it. Once again, kids need stability. Constantly transferring kids surely creates other issues beyond academic ones. Data can prove this, and as Olivia's mom, I know she would regress if transferred yet again. This would be her third school in three years if she's transferred. Siblings and entire families are affected as well. I'm involved on the PTA Board for next year, I volunteer at the school. We're just very involved parents, and we'd like to remain that way at Oak Grove. Moving kids to a building that is not ADA accessible is irresponsible, to say the least, for safety issues. I would ask that you consider that. Communication is key. Why are parents and caregivers purposely left out of these decisions? As a parent, I would argue that constantly shuffling kids around is negligible and borders abuse. That might be dramatic, but I would like for you to look back and see how often these kids with special needs, preschool, all the way up through high school, are moved around. It's disgusting. I would also argue that it's discrimination based on disability. Stability, friendships, proper education are all we ask, just like a typical child. Is it possible to leave these programs where they lie? The program at Oak Grove is a success, why upset that? The St. Joseph School District needs to stop putting kids with special needs last. I feel like we're extremely far behind in how we educate kids with special needs. With proper support and inclusion, college, employment, independence are possible, it's happening. But we have to be given the chance. Our kids need the chance like all other kids. We have to have higher expectations of these kids. By the way, none of this, I feel, is by fault of the staff. The specific issue we're discussing tonight, moving the classrooms around, is only a symptom of the aforementioned problem. Our kids matter. Universal design expert Grant Wiggins writes, "We will never successfully restructure schools to be effective until we stop seeing the diversity in children as a problem." Our school district's mission is educating each child for success, and moving my child to yet another school is setting her up for failure, no doubt. Please carefully consider this decision. I'm available to discuss this at your convenience if needed. I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you ma'am. Next is Larry Stoll.
Thank you. By the name, obviously I'm related to Tara. She is my daughter-in-law. I've been a member of this community for over 40 years. And during that time, I have assisted a number of organizations, including the St. Joseph School District, on a volunteer basis. And I've seen that those experiences led me to understand a lot about St. Joseph, including the fact that they've always stepped up for those that are less fortunate than others. And this community needs that going forward. Which brought me to the conclusion, why are we asking these special needs students to be transferred to another school when the current location, the staff at the current location, is doing an excellent job? The location was designed for special needs. As opposed to, we heard about Coleman just a moment ago being built in 1960s. ADA was not an issue back then. And I question whether or not that building is ADA qualified. So why move students to a building that is not ADA qualified? Two things. From my background in accounting and finance, I reviewed a lot of proposals over the years. And I always looked to the criteria being used to decide what you're going to do, whether it be positive or negative. And two of the criteria that I think are most important for this decision is consistency for these children. Special needs children, as Tara said, are children that need a consistent routine. And to disrupt that would be a disservice to those children. The other thing is the facility. And as I said, the Oak Grove facility- The other thing is the facility, and as I said, the Oak Grove facility was designed to accommodate ADA, whereas some of the other buildings in the district are not. I do think that one of the other things of the criteria should have been examined. The parents of these students should have been talked to and counseled with prior to coming up with this decision. I don't think that was considered at the outset, and it should have been. I ask that this board look at the criteria used. If a study, a complete study was performed for this decision, were the criteria appropriate? Were these things considered before that decision was made? If not, if a study was not performed, I would ask why, because it's very essential to have a study to determine the effects of a decision such as this. So at this point, I ask the board to consider their decision and all of the factors involved, including these children, and please, you know, consider the impact not only on their families but the community as a whole when doing this. And I ask the board to give this due consideration in making your decision. And I know, once you've examined all of the consequences and the criteria being utilized, that you'll come to the right conclusion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yes, you go right ahead, Mr. Sneethan.
I want to get your permission first. You're the boss around here. Okay, first of all, in looking at the agenda, this is under new business and it's just general discussion. There's no vote being taken, and thank you for giving us a little information. I'm sure I'm not speaking for the whole board, but I can almost assure you that no decision will be made until all the facts are gathered. And according to the agenda, we're not voting on anything tonight about that.
That is correct.
Thank you. I just want to clear that up to let you know, you know, I have not been contacted about anything here. I want to know, just like you, your stuff. Let me know. I'm not voting until I have all the facts and I talk to parents and people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sneethan. Kristy Towell?
Hello, board. Thank you so much for allowing me to come. This is my first, and with a daughter with Down syndrome, I'm sure it will not be my last. So thank you so much. I'm also speaking on the Agenda 10.1, the possible move of the move to, from Oak Grove to Coleman. My daughter's name is Journey. She's five years old. She has Down syndrome. She will begin kindergarten next year. As well as Tara, Journey next year will be in her third school in three years. We started at Bessie in preschool, which is my home school, by the way. Then we went to Webster, and now next year is kindergarten. And at this point, we thought it was going to be Oak Grove, and now unfortunately, we don't know. So at our IEP meeting, I was advised, first time I had heard, that it could possibly be moved, and so now we don't know. So that's why I'm here this evening. By home school is Bessie Ellison. It does not have a self-contained classroom and resource room. And I want to just pause real quick. I'm going to address that later on in my talk, but really quickly, self-contained classroom is a very deceiving title. Self-contained classroom is the least restrictive classroom in the special education spectrum. These are children with no diagnosis at all. They could just need extra help with academics, all the way up to Down syndrome autism, but at a very high functioning scale. They could be in this room for an hour, two hours. I have not agreed on Journey's IEP because I don't know the location, but her goals have been established, and she will be in that room next year, maybe two hours. The rest of that day, she will be an active participant in a typical classroom. So that's very important for you to be aware of as we're talking and that you're deciding it. The principal at my home school, Kara Anderson, I love her, she advised me about a year ago to consider Oak Grove as a placement for Journey for the 2016-17 school year. Reluctantly, I began researching Oak Grove because we specifically purchased a home in the Bessie Ellison School District, specifically. Lotamoo, lotamy, okay? But I specifically chose that school district for a reason. And I do have a typical son who's eight years old. He's in second grade there and thriving, and I love the staff, and I'm very involved. PTA ran the carnival this year. Thank you very much. But I was pleasantly surprised when I gave in and I went to tour Oak Grove. Mr. Otto, the principal at Oak Grove, first of all, he's amazing, okay? You do not know the gem that you have. He's amazing. We thank you for him. He has created an inclusion heaven, okay? He calls his students with special needs, his students with exceptionalities, okay? He teaches his staff, the students, and the parents that the children with disabilities are more alike than different. He wants these programs at his school. A lot of people are afraid of these programs. They're high maintenance. They don't want them there, okay? He does. It's his heart. As a parent of a child with special needs, your ultimate fear, the minute you get that diagnosis, is that your child is not going to be accepted. They're going to be a burden, and then I'm going to have to speak at a blasted meeting like this, okay? It's refreshing and exciting to know that there is a school here that wants her, that accepts her, that celebrates her. He celebrated World Down Syndrome Day this year, which happens to be March 21st, Journey's birthday. Jesus is funny, isn't he? This affects their education, okay? The environment of our child is paramount to their education, and I'm not putting down Coleman at all, okay? But sometimes I think we rush to change, and in this instance, we're dealing with a change that doesn't need to be made just yet. Tara and I met with Denise and the superintendent this morning, and we appreciate their time in that private meeting. In that meeting, we were told that space is a concern. In one more school year, 2017, the Y, their lease will be up at Oak Grove. This will free up, oh, please, I beg of you, just a few more minutes. I feel like the decision, this late in the school year, throwing your program together and throwing it together at Coleman will not be successful, okay? We need to take our time. I was told today that this decision will not be made until 30 days from now. I have spent a year working with Mr. Otto and meeting the staff and meeting the teachers and learning the environment of this school. I am an involved parent. Where my child goes to school is important to me. In 30 days, school will not be in session, and I can't go view the way this school works. I can't go view and have meetings with Heather. I can't find the environment of this school. That's not fair to me. And do you realize that, to this date, the three parents that are here tonight are the only ones that have been made aware of this change? Because trust me, if all the parents at Oak Grove knew about this change, you would have a line out the door and there would not be enough minutes for you to listen to us. In my meeting with Denise today, she advised me that the parents at Coleman are happy. They are happy with this program, and there has been no complaints about the program. And they also have not been made aware of the change. So if the parents are happy and they don't know about a change and they haven't asked for a change, why are we going to change it? Because the children that you're wanting to move are way more fragile than my Journey. These are very low-functioning children with autism that, if they are moved, can regress to ping and pooping their pants again, and a parent at Coleman told me that herself. They don't want this change as much as we do, and that's why they haven't been told, because you will have unhappy parents on both sides. Now, I have had a year put into this decision, and they're asking me to change everything at the end of the school year without me even being advised of anything? This is wrong, first of all. I know that change needs to be made in the future, and I'm on board for that, if it benefits our children, but this does not benefit our children. If a change needs to be made, we need to give it time and consideration and not throw something together. My kid's worth more than that. And if any program needs to move, it needs to be because of space. And Dr. Newhart went over all of his concerns. He has a tough job. I get it. I get it. But if a program needs to change, you need to choose a group of children who are strong enough to withstand that move, like our Pegs, our brightest of the bright, who went to Eugene Field for a week and then moved to Oak Grove without a second because they are built for that, okay? Environment is key. I understand that they're telling me, well, her goals and the room and the teacher will be the same. No, it's not. It doesn't matter if Laurie Hall and Paige Bennett go with her. These children at Coleman, unfortunately, are so low-functioning, they are not part of the classroom. They are not part of the school environment. I have spoke with several parents that their children are in that program, and they couldn't tell me a dang thing about the school because their kid's not in it. Pardon me. Every one of Mr. Otto's kids are part of the environment of that school. I know that changes need to be made, but throwing them together at this point is not good. We need time. We need research. We need a better plan ahead. And if nobody is there, the wiser, but the three of us standing here, you're not going to upset anybody. We can wait one year. I know I've gone over my time. Thank you so much. Tara and I were on the email today. Please read it. There's beautiful pictures of our children on it, and you need to see their faces because it's not just a program. It's my child. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for the extra moments.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next we'll have Amanda Como. Did I say that right, ma'am? Como, okay. I was close.
Well, I'm not sure I need to say much after Tara and Kristy, but I'd rather just talk to you from my heart. But this was really last minute for me to even be talking to you guys. I had planned on just corresponding via email, but you guys all have gotten that from me, so it'd just be a lot easier if I could just read it to you. So I'll go ahead and do that. As you said, my name's Amanda Como. I also have a child that will be going into the SPED program at Oak Grove that is potentially going to be moving to Coleman. I have three boys at Oak Grove. Grant is in first grade. Isaiah is in kindergarten, and Carson is in preschool. And throughout my children's four years of education, we have been through four different elementary schools since I had two children on IEPs. It became very hard on the boys and our family as a whole to switch to so many schools. Carson was placed by the district at Oak Grove in 2014. Oak Grove has provided an opportunity for my family that has been nothing short of amazing. Most importantly, being at one school has provided stability and security for my boys. They have blossomed and made many social and academic strides. The principal, Mike Otto, and the staff provide such a supportive, family-oriented environment at the school. I go into detail to explain our experience at Oak Grove because, as you know, the stability we have there is in jeopardy of changing entirely. Carson's program is the one that is possibly moving. When I approached the thought of Carson moving to an entirely different school, it deeply concerns me. I can confidently say that he will regress. Carson has grown by leaps and bounds at Oak Grove. When he started at Oak Grove, he had a vocabulary of about 10 words. He is now able to have complete conversations with both adults and his peers. He has already come such a long way, and I do not want to interrupt his little world. I think it is very important for children to have consistency within their educational journey. Carson is used to Oak Grove School, the teachers, and therapists. Carson has watched his two brothers be students of the same kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Salem. Carson is familiar with her and the classroom. Carson will be in the typical kindergarten room with Mrs. Salem up to 79% of the time per his IEP plan. He would need to get acquainted with a brand-new teacher and staff and therapist if it was to move to Coleman. I would just like to ask you, as the board, to consider these points before making the decision on moving this program. Research proves that instability of children moving from school to school is detrimental to them academically and socially. A child that is on an IEP deserves, just as a typical child, to develop relationships with the same peer group at each grade level and to be part of one school community. When you look into past years, SPED programs get moved on a consistent basis. I just ask why, and can this stop for the sake of our children's stability? The program is successful at Oak Grove. Why is it being moved? If it's a space issue, I ask that a variety of options be considered, even a portable building first before uprooting each one of these childrens and each one of the children and their families. Why are parents not being properly notified in advance of possible changes and being given an opportunity to advocate on behalf of their child? I just happened to find out about the program even being moved, which I'm grateful for. Are the decisions being made in the best interest of the students and the entirety of each family, including siblings? And that pretty much sums it up for me. I just want to thank you guys for taking the time to look at this overall and to make a decision on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we'll have Todd Brockett.
Superintendent Newhart, President Rucker, congratulations. It's been a long haul. New members, Ms. Pasley, Dr. Green, congratulations. All the board members, thank you for your time and your efforts on behalf of the students and the staff of the St. Joseph's School District. Part of my job as an elected person, as you yourselves are on the board, is to represent the needs and the desires and the opinions of those that have elected me. Therefore, I want to speak on number 8.5 Administrative Salary Schedule. I've had a lot of feedback on this from teachers, and we have some really wonderful administrators, and again, they're doing a great job. It isn't that they're not doing their job. It's basically a question from what I perceive from my membership of fairness. Years ago, we had a program called Career Ladder, a program that is still used in Savannah, Missouri, and we were able to stay after school and earn money, up to $5,000, for 120 hours after school at the end of the year. After a few years, it was decided, and we didn't disagree, that the administrators also should receive that $5,000 Career Ladder, although no additional duties were assigned. That was given and granted. Years later, when the money was pulled from teachers because of lack of state funding, the teachers lost their Career Ladder. The Career Ladder was rolled into administrative salaries. It is a hot point with teachers that have been through the Career Ladder program and have had it taken away. If we're going to move forward with healing in this district, the teacher's understanding, as Mr. Sneethan said, of rolling in stipends is a point four. We don't understand. We don't understand how Career Ladder can be taken from teachers. Earlier this year, we represented the coordinators. We were told, you have to choose either time or money. You can't have both. There was nothing rolled in. There was nothing rolled in on any teacher's salary that I've ever experienced, and yet for our staff today, we're expecting our teachers to understand, to be fully cognizant and understand how these things are going to be rolled into administrator salaries. For healing to occur in this district, sometimes there are things called a common experience. In other words, you experience, most of our administrators have been teachers. They know what it's like. I've heard Dr. Newhart talk about his years in the classroom, how it's difficult. It's punishing at times. It's wonderful, and yet it's also punishing its wearing. At the same time, to lose $5,000 for our married At the same time, to lose $5,000 for our married couples, $10,000 in one year was a pretty heavy hit. Our administrators have never experienced that hit. Now, we're talking about rolling in a travel stipend into those salaries. It's nothing personal against the administrators. It's about healing for this district. In other words, the teachers don't understand. Our understanding is a .4, a D minus, on how you can roll something into a salary schedule that we have always been denied. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President, just for clarification purposes...
Yes, sir.
...the recommendation on that item is to maintain the previous decision of the board of leaving mileage stipends out.
Thank you, Mr. Brockett. Our next guest today will be Mr. Schott.
Good evening. My name is Richard Schott, and I speak to you tonight not as a former educator, but as a taxpayer. I, first of all, offer my congratulations to Dr. Green and Tammy Paisley on your election to the board. Approximately one year ago, the school board had a vote was made to approve not to renew a food services contract to an outside provider. The school board also approved providing food services in-house. The reaction to the board decision in the conference room was electric. I felt like I was in the campaign headquarters of the winning candidate. There were cheers, high fives, clapping. Audience members came forward to shake hands with board members and thank them for their decisions. Well, a year has passed, and the agenda item 10-2 addresses the nutrition services program So as a taxpayer, I would like at least a majority of this board to address the positive cash flow of food services. On the PDF document on your computers, under 10-2, on page 2, there is a highlighted area titled "Expected Measurable Outcomes." The first one listed is this: Maintain a financially viable and fiscally responsible department with a positive fund balance. As a taxpayer, I see the food services department as a business that provides a service. I see a positive cash flow not as an expectation, but as a requirement. This is taxpayer money that would be used to subsidize a negative cash flow. Please, if there is not a positive cash flow, consider researching an outside contractor that is hired on the requirement of a positive cash flow. A positive movement by the school board to not use taxpayer money to subsidize a negative cash flow will go a long way to create a positive and supportive community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schott. Our next will be Ms. Lori Witham.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Newhart, I will croak as loudly as I can this evening, speaking to you on behalf of MSTA and paraprofessionals across this district on issue 8.4. Thank you. We want to thank you for working to bring that support staff up to a reasonable wage, and it is reflected in the schedule. There still are some serious inequities with this schedule, however. Number one, the school board agenda was posted Wednesday night. This schedule was not available at that same time. Many people did not see this until last night, the first round. And I know my phone was pinging till 11 o'clock last night. Plus, it keeps changing. As of late this afternoon, it changed yet again for the good. Okay? So there are concerns. I know nurses were consulted. I have not been informed that paras were. If somebody knows that for a fact, I would love to know that for sure, but to my knowledge, paras were not asked. The last several school years, classroom paras were placed in a range one step above crossing guards, but below clerks whose primary job is paperwork. We're talking classroom paraprofessionals who are in the classroom working with students. Right now, on the most updated proposed for next year, these paras, these professionals, are currently listed in range 4... or, excuse me, range 2. You have special ed bus drivers on range 4. Those are individuals having very limited time with students. And non-certified subs in range 5. We see this as a disservice. These paraprofessionals are with children. We ask that the board tonight move classroom paraprofessionals from range 2 to range 4 for this upcoming school year. We also would like the board to approve and organize an ad hoc committee to look at the job descriptions of paraprofessionals. There are some paraprofessionals whose tasks are relegated more to the paperwork. We have paras that are one-to-one with students. We have paras that have to attend yearly MANT training to know how to legally and safely restrain a child. We have paras, especially special and early childhood special ed paras, who are crucial for data collection. They are there collecting data, helping with those data cycles, analyzing that data, scoring that data. Those are with kids. Many of these special ed professionals are frequent recipients of hits, kicks, bites. None of that a classroom teacher generally has to deal with. So we are asking that you consider moving these paraprofessionals who are working front lines with kids to a higher range for next year. And then looking at the differentiation, because some of these paras require more training than others. Very definitely require more training. Some of these paras have longevity that has not been corrected. The board worked to correct certified teachers in their steps. I know I have a para in my building who's been in this district 21 years and is still on step 17. There are some inequities that are still going on at this level. We do appreciate it is working forward, and it will take time. But some of that can be corrected tonight by moving classroom paras to a higher range. And then looking and asking some representatives from that field to sit down and say, is there a need to maybe further delineate those paras? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I want to say thank you to all of you who participated in the audience participation. It is a vital piece in the work that we do. Thank you very much. Whether you agree with us or not, we still appreciate your comments.
Mine says I'm joined.
Does everyone in there?
Second time's charm. Says under discussion for mine.
Yes. Who's in on?
Am I not in? I thought I did. How's that?
She wants everybody signed in. I need to ask, as a new board member, and this being only my second meeting, I'm assuming...
General meeting?
That... Yeah, my first general meeting. I'm assuming that if you're scrolling my agenda, that I am joined, or is there something that says? Okay, thank you.
Am I in? Am I in now, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. Let's move forward here.
We got a vote.
Approve the agenda. That's on the...
It's on.
Can you get a motion to approve the agenda?
Seconded.
Second. Ms. Consolvo?
No. Dennis and Tammy?
Yes.
Are we voting electronically?
I don't have a place to vote electronically. Okay?
None of us do yet.
Gotta love this technology.
We got to scroll down. Nope. Nope.
It's not there.
It's not on.
Did you review agenda?
We want to do verbal. We're going to go verbal, board members.
We're having technical difficulties.
Everyone ready? Dr. Green? Are you ready? Okay. We're going to go verbal.
Ms. Sneethan?
Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Danforth?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Paisley?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next will be the superintendent's report.
You can read the superintendent's report as presented. I would like to point out a couple items that are not on the report. I would like to put a shout-out and congratulations to the St. Joe's School District Volunteer of the Year. Pershing Elementary held a surprise assembly for Leslie, the speech for her dedication to the St. Joe's School District and all the St. Joe's School District volunteers. So congratulations, Leslie. I do not believe she's here tonight. Secondly, Teacher Appreciation Week is May 2nd through the 6th. So the teachers that week will have many things, I'm sure, going on, but I do want to make sure we put a shout-out for them as well that week. If you would take particularly close attention to the item number 6, presenters for the 15-16 Superintendent Scholarship Award Schedule, please get with Debbie Consolvo. Look at that schedule. If there are any dates, there are times that you would like to present as a board, please let her know. And then also, the graduation schedule, dates and times are listed. If there's any corrections there, please again let Debbie know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newhart.
Do we advance ourselves to the next item?
No.
So do I just go next item?
All right, next item, business is approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Danforth and Ms. Hodges.
Yes.
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 Approval of bills. Recommend a motion to approve the bills as presented.
So moved. Second.
All right.
No questions this month, Wes. Aren't you excited?
We're getting right on top of it.
It's a happy month for Wes.
Happy. You don't have any questions?
Nothing substantial. I'll let it pass.
You're slipping.
They were really good explanations, so I could tell.
Ms. Consolvo?
Ms. Sneethan?
Yes.
Ms. Danforth?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Paisley?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Yes. Next will be our March financial statement.
Recommend to approve it as presented by Mr. Metz.
If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions. So moved.
Second.
Approved and seconded.
Ms. Sneethan?
Yes.
Ms. Danforth?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Paisley?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Yes. Next will be the District Credit Card, RFP results, and a recommendation.
Mr. Metz?
Hey, we, as you know, we were currently using US Bank as a secured credit card for a half a billion dollar credit line, because that means we have to have $500,000 tied up all the time. During our audit, our annual audit, the auditor recommended that we put this out for bid and get away from doing that. So we put it out for bid. We got two really good banks. We ended up going with UMB Bank. Central Bank was the other bank. They're out of Jeff City. We chose UMB Bank for a couple of reasons. One, they're local. They have a local presence. And second, their rebate was higher, about a percent higher. So that would be our recommendation this time, is to switch to UMB Bank July 1st.
I would make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Metz. We got a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Consolvo?
Ms. Sneethan?
Yes.
Ms. Danforth?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Paisley?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Yes. 8.4 would be our support staff wage schedule.
The support staff wage schedule. I want to make some clarifications here. There is a revision to the para. It is listed there as revised under the posting. And then also, you'd see a total estimate salary budget that I think would be wise to take a look at as well. Turn the presentation over to Brian Kraus and Wes Metz.
All right, to get started here, first of all, in my long 16-day tenure here, I've not gotten in on all of these discussions, so a great deal of this happened before I came on board. As I understand it, the board's direction was basically three-faceted, to try to stay at approximately a $3 million figure in terms of salary increases for the 16-17 year, that no employee should lose money, and that the goal was to get the employee groups, each of our employee groups, to approximately the 50th percentile when compared with comparable districts in the area. With those as the parameters, Amy Todd did a great amount of work on this, as did Wes, and I kind of got in on the tail end of it. The parameters that we set, first of all, that in order to stay within the $3 million estimate of increased salaries, this would need to be a multi-year plan. Secondly, that there are some of our employees who were as much as 25% below the 50th percentile when the studies came in. Some were... A very few showed that they were above the 50th percentile, and a lot, a great amount were within 3%, 4%, 5%. When we looked at the employee groups that were more than 10%, double-digit raises, we felt like would be unsustainable under the $3 million cap. Also, some employee placements would need to be considered individually because of some of the changes that we made to the salary compensation tables. Just one quick example would be the accompanists. Previously, well, this year included, there are two different scales. One, if the accompanist did not have a music degree, one if they did. So we synthesized, and there were four or five job categories like that. So we did some synthesis there so that there's only one payment rate for subs, certified subs, non-certified subs, ISS supervisors, accompanists, or a few of them that come to mind. Now, to do that, we're going to have to address some employees individually, but then, moving forward, we'll have one rate of pay for those types of groups. The first salary schedule that you have in your packet is for the educational support groups.
Could you address a little bit more with the total?
Okay. Wes, do you want to?
Yeah.
Since this is your spreadsheet.
What we've done here, Debbie, you could scroll. What we've done here, Debbie, you could scroll it down a little bit on the side, we can see the, the, all the numbers, I think. There you go. Whoop, perfect. So, what we've done is, we've already approved the teacher salary schedules, certified staff, process consultants, so those are all certified. It's come, it's gonna be, these are estimated numbers based on a snapshot in time, so it's in the February. So, all current employees, this is what it would approximately cost to increase those salaries.
Does that include benefits?
Yes, does also include benefits. So then, we did the same thing, I did the same thing with the support staff, with the salary schedules that we are currently presenting. And you could see by the different groups, how much of an increase it's gonna be for next year, which is 1.82 million dollars. So, the total for the certified and the support is 2.7 million dollars. Does everybody follow me?
That, that's the figure, we were trying to stay within the 3 million, um, goal, um, between the certificated salary increases and the wage, wage schedule increases.
Okay. So, the extra duty, we haven't done that yet, but we anticipate if we, if we, it's based on the teacher salary schedule, so if we increase it to 36, too, like we did the other salary schedules, that's the estimated additional cost for extra duties for next year, that'd be coaches, your, um, your extracurriculars, all those different organizations. Now, the PTO is paid time off, and this is an estimation, 'cause I have no idea where we're gonna be, but we anticipate that's gonna be about a hu, $800,000 hit to our budget next year. So, which gives us a total increase of 3.6 million dollars to salaries and benefits, salaries and benefits, 'cause PTO is a benefit. Everybody have any questions?
So, why is the ATO so much, PTO so much more than it was before? And people are still taking the same amount of time?
Well, we changed it and the payouts are different now.
Oh, yes, okay.
'Cause now we're paying it out.
At the end of the year.
Well, we're paying it every year, so anything that's accumulated gets paid out annually, and then we've also increased the amount we're paying.
And again, the idea behind that PTO was to encourage staff members to be in the classroom and not to use days, but also as a retention incentive, uh, for people to stay in the district, not to have the high turnover rate.
Mr. Sneethen?
Yes, did you have a question?
Mr. Sneethen, you have a question?
Yes, uh, actually, it's for Dr. Newhart. Would it be possible for us to not vote on this tonight and move this to the next board meeting, or is that too late, or? Then, people have a chance to di, digest it a little bit better, 'cause I'm hearing changes and I'm not sure we're ready for this.
I think a work session would actually be beneficial.
If that was the case, that's what I would recommend, did you take it to the May 13th work session?
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor?
It's not the table, it's just to recommend to take it to the May 13th work session?
Take it to the.
Yes.
I think that'll just give us more time to be able to digest it, and then also come with questions and have more time to really be able to delve into it.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, um, I have a question, since we've seconded and we can have a little bit more discussion. Um, one of the things I was interested in, um, was, I know the para salaries were below market averag, below, not just the average, but the minimums. I wanted to know if the new schedule takes them to at least market minimum.
Yes, and when I talk to you about a multi-year plan and anybody that was double digits away, uh, in the, in the comparable districts, our paras were 18% below market, custodians were 25%, engineers were 24, and so with any.
Is that below market average or below market minimum?
Below market starting.
Okay, so, the lowest end.
50th percentile of the starting salaries in the comparable districts. And that's the goal that we're trying to get. And, and when you get all, when you get your people to the 50th percentile at the start, the way the tables are indexed, that's gonna keep them at the 50th percentile all the way through.
So, this being a multi-step, when, let's say, we do X this year, next year we do X, then by the third year, then we should be at the 50th percentile that, that's the current 50th percentile.
But.
How do we stay ahead of the others continuing to grow?
The step is built into there, and that will, we'll adjust that annually as, as we need to.
And so, is a step for a year of service, or how, how do you define a step? Because I've heard different conversations, and so it's like.
Yeah, it is, and, and one of the things that you need to do is, is get out of your minds that a step always equals a year of experience, because it doesn't. Just as an example, we, we had to take some employees off one pay scale and move them to another, so they may have gone from, um, let's say they were at $15, and we found that the market value, uh, was 1575, we rolled them to the step, which put them at that, and then they'll get their step the next year, so they may have got, actually gone from step 10 to step 12. We also took some people that, um, from one range to another, where they may have moved back four or five steps, but they're still making 7% more money than they did the last year. So, you can't, you can't say, "I've been here 20 years, I should be on step 20." In some cases, will that be true, yes, but in, in others, it, it often is not, and that's, that's one of the things that's the hardest for people to understand. It's, it's a mindset, and I know it makes intuitive sense, "Well, I've been here 20 years, I should be on step 20." You might be on 25, you might be on 15, but we're still keeping in mind the board directive that no one loses money, and that we're moving people toward the 50th percentile. So, if you hear somebody say, "My step is off," yeah, it may well be, but, but I can assure you, their compensation is, is in fitting with the whole rationale that we're using. If it's more than double digits off of median, it's gonna be a multi-year plan. If it was less than that, we tried to do it in one. In order to stay within the 3 million, you cannot give 25% raises, or 24% raises, or 18% raises, it's just not fiscally possible. And so, to be financially sustainable, that's why we put a multi-year plan in, so that it's 8% over three years, or 6% over three years, those types of things.
Dr. Kraus, I have a question. Prior to presenting this, then, since it was just posted, I think, last night late, um, how much education have we done to our staff to teach them about the fact that one year is not one step? I've been in education 26 years, and in the education world, on a salary schedule, the step is your years of service, pretty consistent.
Unless you have a freeze.
Right, unless you have a freeze, and we don't even say that word.
I know.
Okay, we do not even say that word.
Unless you have a sub-32-degree temperature.
Yeah, right, there you go, and, and no school attached to it that day, a snow day. So, I'm, I'm worried, 'cause I can, I can see where our staff would be going crazy, thinking, uh, you know, "Wait a minute, I've been here 14 years and they're only, I'm coming in at 12." Even though they might see that, uh, salary a little higher, or maybe even the same, or, you know, we've gotta educate our staff, the fact that if we're gonna go off of that same thing that they have been working under for years, that's super important to begin with.
It's gonna take a lot of work throughout many different aspects with this. And I know what Wes, and even when Amy was here, and when Brian came on board, what they were trying to do was implement a, a two- or three-phase plan. The one that's presented here tonight actually ranges from about 6% to 8%, if you include the step with it, but it's pretty much across the all-job categories, is that not correct?
There, there are some that are slightly less than 6%, but the majority are between 5% to 8%, I would say.
When we moved from the range 1 to range 2 for paras, where does that range 2 take us in percent-wise? 'Cause range 1 was at 8%, am I right?
The, the, if you'll notice, the, uh, one of the inequities, one of the speakers earlier pointed out the fact that there are some inequities in the system. This is not a perfect document, absolutely not. And one of the things that was pointed out was that, um, there were a couple of employee groups who were being paid lower this year, that were moved up to the same step as paras. That made sense, you know, so what we did was, we created a separate range for those two employee groups that were lower, made that range 1, and then started the paras at range 2. The money was the same as what we had posted as when they, when it was at range 1, so there was just some, some movement made on the salary schedule itself. Again, it goes back to the fact that not only did they get a 6% raise, but when they have a step, that makes it, for most paras, it was 8.7% raise. We felt like that was sustainable, but yet a, a, a good start on getting them up to the, up to the 50th percentile. So, there would be, assuming that, um, local funding is reestablished. Uh, we should be able to sustain that for, for years 2 and 3, and then hopefully at that time, then they're, they're at market value, median, median market value.
This is just an example of the para increases. The cost for range 2, um, current status of all paras would be 247,000, to go to range 3, just for the paras, would be 554,000.
Well, I have to tell you, this may look good to you, but quite honestly, when I saw this last night and saw a para at a range 1, my heart stopped. Really, with their job description and the requirement that they, um, that they have to meet to be a para, am I right, at 60 hours of college?
That was the revision that, that was presented, you are correct, 60 college credit hours. The revision corrected, um, shows the proper classification, or better, I don't wanna say proper, it's a better classification.
You're saying 2 is a better classification?
We had, um, several people, or several groups on the same job, uh, range that probably should not have been on the same job range. And that, that's what you're gonna see throughout all this, it needs to be tweaked. You, you have a budget that has to be presented and prepared by June, um, trying to get these things, uh, decided moving forward, um, and there's many, there's many parts to it. To get this all right, the, this, this first time, it's gonna be a work in progress even as you move in next year. Uh, it really needs to be, um, dealt with as soon as we make a decision, and, um, you start the summer months and get back here in August, um, they need to be working towards, you know, getting a better, um, schedule continually tweaked.
Okay, because we are gonna move this to the work session on the 13th, I won't take up any more time tonight, but I sure have a lot more to, um, of concerns to express even about range 2, but we'll talk about that on the 13th in the work session.
Can I ask one more question? Do you think that this is, constitutes enough work, that this might be a separate work session, because we have BLDD coming to the 13th?
I need to take a look at dates, but there's a possibility that we could even have a, a, particularly an executive session with even some hires at that time, um, coaching hires, those types of things, so it might be even d, wise to look at another date.
I just think this might be lengthy, and if BLDD's coming, that is gonna be a long conversation, I just don't wanna overburden us at, at one meeting, so I think that maybe that might be wise if we can.
I think this salary schedule is important enough that it warrants another meeting, but I would, and I fibbed, because I do have one last question, where are employees brought in? I had asked Wes at the last, uh, work session, what, you know, how much of the employees that this schedule affects, and, and I don't just mean the educational support, I mean all of the schedules. How many of those employees were shown this schedule and it was discussed with them? You know, how much are we involving our people? And, um, they said, I thought the thought was to get a few of them in to look at it, and so I wanna make sure that we've done that, and they've been able to give their input.
How many employee groups have you talked to, Mr. Kraus?
I spoke with, uh, nursing and operations, maintenance, and then I spoke with the directors of food service, special ed, and ELL. Uh, one of the difficulties with bringing groups in is, paras are a great example, they're, they're busy all day long, and to get them all in as a group is impossible.
During the day, but they would probably come like at 3:30 or 4 o'clock, if it's important enough to them.
We have to pay them if we do that.
Yeah, that's okay, it's important enough. Because there's such a discrepancy, I mean, this, this particular group is so grossly underpaid in education period, and then our compri, our compensation study that we did pointed that out, and painted a pretty good picture of how, how sad they were paid, and this may be a group that we have to handle a little bit different, and I know you start getting into, um, maybe into some trouble when you start looking at one group and not all the groups, but we're trying to compensate everybody some. Again, phew, I'll be quiet till May, or till May 13th, sorry.
I understand your passion, we all understand your passion, we appreciate your passion. And we are gonna have a work session on it, so then all our questions will be discussed openly, ma'am, okay? Do we have anything else, you have anything else?
No, not unless you have other questions.
Do you have any other questions for this gentleman?
I'll save them, thank you. Yep, I'll ask on that date, too.
Okay, so.
11th, the 11th.
It's May 11th, which is a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday.
It's Wednes, excuse me, you're correct, Wednesday, um, May 11th.
Not Friday, May 13th.
Friday the 13th wouldn't be a good day.
So, we have a motion on the floor?
In a second.
Okay.
Or look at a different date?
Or look at a different date, if it's, if it's gonna be too crowded, uh, information to.
If you want to amend your motion.
Yeah. We might need to do the salary thing by itself.
Yeah, because it's, it's a big, it's a big one.
So, Dennis, you had said.
It's our people.
So, you're amending your.
Amending the original motion. Special work session dealing with the salary schedule of the support staff.
And can I ask, too, on that, can we bring our administrator's salary schedule into that? 'Cause tonight's an info and action, but I, I can't even read that thing, I can't even make heads or tails of it. Has anybody else understood it?
That's the next agenda item, that probably needs to be addressed at that agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, well, I amend my second to match his motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, if I'm understanding this right, wanna make sure, you wanna have a special work session just for the support staff wage schedule?
Yes.
To be determined?
Yes.
Okay. I would assume that.
Yeah, we'll have to schedule a different date. Other than the 11th. Everyone good with that?
Yep.
Easiest month there is.
Okay, all right. Ms. Amy?
Mr. Sneethen?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Pasley?
Absolutely, yes.
Priesman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes. All right, 8.5 will be administrative salary schedule.
Currently, the Board of Education has approved, uh, on March 14th, the rollout of administrative mileage and application of that. Uh, I've looked at this many different ways, I've made this discussions with some of you, as well as with Mr. Metz and, and Brian Kraus in regards to it. My recommendation is to maintain that and, and have that, uh, March 14th decision stand, and roll out the administrative mileage as, uh, applied in that presentation that night. I went ahead and attached, uh, what was approved that night on March 14th. And then, consideration be given, as you're doing for all employees for 16-17, um, to look at, um, a step for administrators after the mileage is rolled out.
Mr. Sneethen?
Thank you. Let's, let's back this up, we, we already voted for this.
Correct, there's no action needed on the application of rolling out the administrative mileage.
I was just, I was just, simple reminder to the board, if, if we're thinking ever about undoing votes, we need to have a two-thirds, you gotta, you gotta do the vote first before you can even consider revoting, and we've already voted on this.
Yeah, there's no need to revisit, we, we are fully, um, will intend and will do rolling out of the administrative mileage.
So, I thought that the administrative salaries were on a freeze for next year in part to, um, try to make money for some of these other salaries that needed adjusting. Wasn't that also already voted on?
The March 14th vote is the one that superseded, um, the la, latest vote of the application. If you recall, going back to February, it was a vote to apply a freeze, um, but then the question came up at the March 5th work session on Saturday morning, how to apply that, uh, because it was still a question of whether you wanted the mileage rolled out of that freeze. So, we presented on March 14th, an application of rolling out that mileage, and that is the latest decision by the board. I'm recommending that, um, that that's decision, board vote, stand, not change it, stick with it, whatever you wanna say, so there's no revote on that. The mileage will be rolled out. The mileage will be rolled out. I think that has to be sent loud and clear to the staff, obviously, here tonight with Mr. Brockett's presentation, as well as to the community. The salary schedule that you approved for '16, '17 is just that, a salary schedule.
Yes.
Okay? And no different than the teacher's salary schedule with a base of 36,2 for next year. No different than the wage schedules that you're looking at. There is no mileage in that schedule.
Right.
Mileage is to be paid separate, in district mileage on the IRA rate next year, as approved by the board. So, Halls, I'm saying that there doesn't need to be any action tonight. I'm just looking for, in future consideration, for administrators to be given a step after the mileage is rolled out.
So is that the action tonight, is the step?
No, I'm not looking for action on that tonight.
Oh, okay.
This is just information.
But I do want to-
I think there's some other things that you need to get squared away. Obviously, one is the support staff schedule.
Ms. Stanford?
On February 22nd, we did freeze administrative salaries with a vote to 6 to 1. The motion carried. On January 11th, with a 6-0 vote, we approved to roll out that administrative mileage. The notes from the work session on March 5th say that the Board of Education determined and approved during a February 22nd meeting that administrative salaries would be frozen, and mileage would be rolled out for the '16, '17 school year. So both.
You had a March 5th work session. A work session carries no-
But we already did the other two votes. I don't see that we re-
March 14th was the vote that applied the application process, where you actually saw the amounts at the March 14th Board of Education meeting. And you voted to approve that application, as you see there tonight, post under the same agenda item.
I wonder if-
Do we take the vote, I mean, did we undo the vote, rescind the vote for the freezing of the administrative salaries? Because that's not in any of the minutes, and I think we'd have to do that according to Robert's Rules of Order.
We have to do that to approve the step?
It was an application of that freeze.
Is our legal here today? Let me ask the lawyer.
There he is.
There's Joe.
I think it's an interpretation, how you want to look at what all occurred. Bottom line is, I think the intent of the board wanted the mileage rolled out, and then frozen. If that's the intent, what you believe, then we leave everything as it, as what you see as is. Halls, I'm asking, at future date, if you look at this, if you leave it as is, there's no more decisions made.
I don't want to leave them there forever, but my understanding was, for next year, that's how it would be.
To be left in '16, '17.
In order to make some room for these other positions that needed so badly to be brought closer to, even the market minimums, so.
Mr. Sneadon?
Mr. Chairman, it was my belief that, when we started discussing all this, we did vote to freeze the administrative salaries. But our idea was to look at those salaries, and the people that made more money than the average would be frozen until that caught up, and then we were looking at raising some that were below. So some of the people in the administrative area were making way too much money, they were going to be froze, and then the ones that were making less than the average, that eventually we would try to bring them up, just like the teachers. So that's the way I remember it going down.
Basically, right now, everything will be left, moving forward, with the mileage rolled out, as presented. If we want to address, looking at those inadequacies, we could do that at Work Session 2, potentially.
Oh, that would be great.
Would that work?
I think that would be best.
Because, Dr. Newhart, was this the first time that the step was mentioned for administration? Because I've gone back to all the different times that you've discussed it, and the step was never brought up, but it's attached tonight to this particular item. So did that just become a new item?
As a consideration going forward, yes.
It's a new recommendation.
Consideration for next school year, going forward. And I think we do need to consider that. You heard the conversation that Dr. Kraus and I had about the word "freeze." That's a scary thing, because it doesn't just affect next school year, it affects your retirement. It affects retirement big time, and it's amazing the amount of dollars that it will affect for these people.
The biggest thing I'm trying to make clear with everybody tonight is that the mileage is rolled out, and they'll be moved accordingly on the schedule with that rollout.
I believe also that, in our conversations, we have talked about no one taking a pay cut.
Well, that'll happen, though, if you roll out the mileage.
Yes, it will.
It will, but if you consider the step that will make that mileage roll out-
Well, I guess that's my question. We are considering a step, so they're literally, literally not frozen.
We are considering the step.
Thank you.
We'd have to undo the vote to freeze, though.
According to the recommendation, we are considering the step now. It wasn't part of the conversation before.
So, and we would have to do a vote to undo the freeze in order to consider the step. That's the point I'm trying to make. And we really seriously want to consider that.
No, that's what I'm saying here, is I politely disagree with the whole, it has been very confusing when applying this, because it was not uniformly across the board. And what we've attempted to do is, and we believe we, as best we can do it, was to apply that rollout, which freezes wherever that administrator would land on the schedule. That's what I believe the intent of the board was throughout all this, was to not make the mileage part of that total, that the administrator was making.
And I understand that, and I think that salaries and mileage should be separate, but now we have this.
So you've got to get to a starting point first.
Right.
So get to that starting point, and currently, that is correct, the way it reads, with the rollout, they will be frozen there for the '16, '17 school year.
But if we're talking about a step, then that's not frozen.
That is correct. If a consideration be given at a later date for that.
And so-
Okay, so that's going to go to the next work session?
At this particular time, we need to take this to that same work session that we're talking about on salaries. Can I get a motion to do that?
So moved to second.
Do we have any discussion, other discussion? Dr. Green, you look as though you'd like to say something.
I'll ask a quick question for clarification, because the verbiage is somewhat confusing through the various board meetings. And this may get into murky waters, but was the intention of the board with the voting to keep administrator salaries level from last calendar year, this current calendar year, to next calendar year? Or was the intent of the board, as it rolled out mileage, for take-home pay to be less? In other words, was there an intention to have some savings from these motions?
I don't believe there was ever an intent to make anyone take a pay cut.
Okay.
That was not discussed as a-
But that can't possibly be, because if we're taking away the travel stipend, that's going to lower administrators' salaries. So, I mean, if they're traveling, then they can get reimbursed by that for that same travel, but that dollar amount is going to be lower.
But that will no longer be part of their salary, so we have to make sure we keep that as a separate category, mileage. So we have a lot to talk to, a lot of discussion.
We're getting into the meat of the discussion that we're going to have. Mr. Hatley, do you have anything you'd like to add to this for us right quick?
I was sort of nodding my head at Dr. Green's point, because at the last meeting, I, yeah-
Please go to the mic, sir, so we can all hear.
That's okay. I'm usually loud enough to be heard anywhere, but-
I heard you.
Okay. I was nodding my head when Dr. Green asked a question, because I think when this came up the last time, I think I might have mentioned you and Dr. Newhart, that I think it comes down to how you define the word "freeze," what was meant by that. And I think that's where the confusion comes in. So let's say you have an administrator who's, well, not salary, whose scheduled pay on their contract was $100,000, and of that $1,500 was mileage. Okay, going next year, is the intent that their salary on their contract's going to be 98.5, and that's a freeze of the salary? Or was there intent that they would take home the same amount of money as before? I think that's where the confusion comes. I think it is a terminology issue. That was my question, you know, as I was hearing this back and forth at the last meeting. I, you know, I'm not on the board, so I can't speak to what the board member's individual intent was on that, but I think that is where the confusion comes in. And I think if it was the board's intent that it was 98.5, and if you're doing enough in district mileage, you're going to get that extra $1,500 anyway, you're none the worse for wear.
That's how I thought it was going to be.
Okay.
That's the current interpretation I'm understanding as well.
Okay, if that's helpful, hopefully that's been helpful, and if that's where we are, I think we're all on the same page, then, and it's just a matter of making that adjustment on the salary. Is that-
Well, I was just thinking, so would that be rolled in, if we're thinking they're on the same? I guess I lost that.
I wouldn't use "roll in" or "roll out."
Yeah, I know.
To me, eliminate, or-
It's eliminating-
Eliminating it, and they will drop with the elimination.
The salary schedule was created first, okay, last spring. Then they added up all the totals for an administrator. That total, like Joe said, came to $100,000. They replaced on the schedule closest to where, what step, $100,000 matched.
Which included the travel stipend at the time.
So you roll that out, most of them will be taken back a step or two steps. It varies. It ranges from $1,500 to $2,800, basically what will be rolled out. So even if you consider, after the rollout and the freeze, that's currently what has been decided, okay? If a consideration later date here would be to then to give a step, not freeze it, undo that, some would not make up that $2,800.
But they would not be as far off as they would be.
You're not going to be consistent with any of this. We just got to get, whether it's support staff wages, whether it's teacher's schedule, whether it's administrators, all this needs to just continually to get worked out and tweaked every year going forward. You can't get all this done right in one full swoop with the amount of dollars necessary to do it.
I think that, and just to follow on, I know when we talked about this at one point, there might have been two or three anomalies of people coming in new who, it just didn't make sense.
Those people had not had a travel rolled in, because they weren't even employees then, they just put right where they belonged.
And those may be deals where you individually take those into account and make those adjustments so that it's fair across the board, but keeping with the intent of the board, which was, the salary portion of what they had in their contract is unchanged for next year.
Right, you're just essentially putting them where they should have started.
Right.
And then been accumulating their mileage for that, instead of-
Well, contracts will be, and letters of intent are going out, and that's what we'll be doing, is sending those out with the mileage rolled out, and then frozen at that step, wherever that takes an individual.
And realizing that we do have till June 30th to do whatever we need to do to-
Correct.
To make it right.
I still think we need to address this, set this special.
I do, too.
And we need to talk about it.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate your clarification. Board members, we will have that workshop, and I ask you to take the time, I know you will, but I'll say it anyway, we'll take the time to write our questions down, study this a little bit, and whatever you have that wasn't answered tonight, or whatever comes up between now and then, that we can present it and go over it all together as a team, okay?
You do have a motion and a second on the floor to take this to the-
To a special workshop.
To a work session.
You going to call, Rumors?
Mrs. Stanford?
No.
Mrs. Harges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hathaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Chrisman?
Yes.
Yes.